Both of them?
Our guys can do that.
I never know what to ask. Yeah. I'll still bring Chase in on it since he's kind of already scheduled it, maybe let him. Yeah. Right. Yeah.
We'll be happy to interview them too.
Yeah, man.
It's the long lost.
Just, just barely.
Good afternoon, my call this Tuesday, March second, Southern City Council meeting in order. Start our whole of our meetings with an indication of the pledge allegiance. Starting by a moment of silence for those which have been paid or prayed for on their own, they will be led by councilman Giver Shaw, pray for us and give us pledge allegiance. Right, please?
Our Father, we thank you that we can comment start of this meeting and acknowledge that you are the sovereign Lord and creator of the ball. And we ask that you would give us a humbleness, a devotion, a love and appreciation for all blessings that have come to us. We pray that people are community, we thank you Father for the use of our schools going back to four days ago. Thank you for our children, or we pray that you would be with them or strengthen them in tough and difficult. Or we pray that you do teachers administration of giving wisdom to our children. Pray Father that you do with us, give us listening today as we consider leads in our community. Thank you Father for the opportunity to sing your hymns, walk man, pray that you do use that. The Father and the Father in our community, pray that he stays, pray his name.
Lord, we just put a fire on my streets of America, through the problem of which is sadness. On a nation, I'm gonna be invisible, we're gonna be trusted, scarred.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. We've got our February sixteenth meeting, meeting minutes, is there a motion to approve the bridge or making any amendments? Davis moves last name seconds that we approved the minutes as written, is there any discussion? There are none, all in favor say aye. The minister approved it as written. We did all business, boards and commissions. We've, speaking of just a couple of them before the meeting, we've got a couple board names that have come in, so let's unfortunately, so maybe council will kind of kick this scandal the next meeting of the month. Raffled by somebody's appointment, so apologies for this tracking out a little longer than I would like. So moving down to. RZ dash twenty dash seventeen thirteen fifty one power road. Any changes that might just help us approve it? There are no. John moves. Library seconds that we approve final reading of orders twenty seven, twenty five, recent AC for Jesus. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. I think I made an error there because. I needed, I needed a motion. I guess this part, is that right, I missed that? Do I get a, we need a motion covered? Yeah, who was that? And then. I'm sorry, yes, ma'am. Sorry about that. I'm moving ahead, free annexation, final reading of an annexation, is there any? Mr. Foreman, you got that?
No, no change since last time.
Okay, is there a motion to approve final reading? Library moves, Casey seconds that we approve final reading as presented, no changes this time. Any further discussion? There are none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, final reading carries of orders twenty seven. Sale property of the final rating of orders twenty seven, twenty seven. Mr. Harris, is there any changes?
Mayor, councilman, that.
There are motions. Casey moves, Davis, sex that we consider final reading, any other discussion?
We have a special buyer. We do have a special buyer, we have people who are ill, they're trying to be, we want them to.
Any further discussion? There are none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Final reading of orders twenty seven, twenty seven, authorizing sale property is approved. Consider final reading of orders under twenty seven, twenty eight, authorizing sale of all parcels. Mr. Foreman, any changes to this?
Sir, uh, if we go through with this, uh, we'll be updating council before any actions taken after this action. So, um, just with, with the specifics, but, um, please just counsel, uh, reading.
In this final, I guess the pressure, I think this final reading just authorizes.
Authorizes to, to transfer, I think we had a question last time with the specifics and I will, uh, make sure to brief council on that before anything happens.
Thank you. Is there a motion for final reading? Casey moves, library seconds, we approve final reading, any further discussion? There are none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Final reading carries. I have number five, property transfer, consider final reading of orders twenty seven, twenty nine. Authorizing the exchange of the city, if it's a certain plan, also off the south and north, any? Mr. Harris, is there any of this?
Mr. Mayor, councilman, does any changes? A lot of ways why I'm sure of that.
We just removed the papers, freed all. Are we now at ease with being able to access these? Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to consider final reading? Don't move. Corey moves and Shaw seconds that we consider final reading, any further discussion? There are none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Final reading of twenty seven, twenty nine carries. Moving down to our emergency ordinance regarding headwinds. Mr. Foreman, anything to add or is?
No, so this is just continuing, as you know, your emergency ordinance. You have short term that extends, again, asking that it's continued.
Thank you. There are motions to consider extending orders twenty seven, thirty. Twenty seven, twenty one. It moves library seconds. Any further discussion?
Well, just a, then you put it back.
Oh, we, we did some, uh, question within, so certainly it happens, but as far as from the public, no.
It seems as things obviously the government is saying, the schools are starting to free up, you know, I guess here, hopefully in the near future, we can discuss some of these things. Whatever, one day we'll be back to more, whatever that will be. So we have a motion on the second. Questions, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? And there is there stand. And moving over into community development, this is, um, consider periphery of orders, amend the CBPG entitled budget in year twenty twenty one, includes special allocation. Two hundred forty three thousand five hundred and two dollars for coronavirus, any leading security act, so. Mr. Frank will present this, I guess, to declare this is amended last year, but is the twenty twenty and twenty twenty one.
This will hold, good afternoon, councilman, we're, we're talking, uh, CBD, community blocks, current money, also for coronavirus. And as you see in your package, there are two drafts, one draft two, so two hundred forty three thousand five hundred and fifty dollars of that administration is forty eight seven, something United Industries is ninety four eight. There, there are two, YWCA on draft one fifty thousand, on draft two forty thousand, YMCA twenty five thousand. Grant Children's Center on draft two ten thousand, Boys and Girls Club twenty five thousand, which fills the total of this twenty, twenty three, five five two. This is for low and moderate income areas and clientele dealing with coronavirus. There are several ways that we're using this money for United Industries, doing fireside fund, H F A, heating, those, those monies that will be helpful for those people that are dealing with coronavirus. YWCA, based on COVID, there's a number of individuals that will be able to go home, the, the wives and their children. Tipped now because of COVID, with the social distancing and sanitation will have to have different funds to help out with that program. Why that the Boys and Girls Club, the scholarships, youth COVID, they help out for, before, after, endurance group care. And finally, for the Grant Children's Center, another program that's dealing with, for investment violence and for assessments for, for health, for mental health, that's what these monies will be used for, for any outholding crafts in your packages. Why any questions?
Is there any question, Mr. Frank?
Question, but a question on the Boys and Girls Club, there's a program on the south side of the area. With this, uh, um, the applicable, uh, children, the, and maybe, maybe, uh, base.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, the low market, very negative.
Thank you, Mr. Shawn, just a minute, children's center. One of the, uh. Problems with the pandemic is just children not in school. As I've said before in council meetings, uh, no one mind the fact for these child as teacher. And, uh, without being in school, it's been just much more horrific. And, uh, more cases of child abuse in our community at this, uh, children's center on Salem Avenue in the scene. And, uh, like to sum this money, because children don't show up at, uh, public meetings, children don't really vote, um, and children are unspoken people in our community. And, uh, there are a lot of children that are going through serious, uh, horrific pain, you know, in, in, in our newspaper a couple of weeks ago, just horrific abuse. And this center, um, in our community now, in, in service, these abused children can assess a bit of abuse, um, and offer medical treatment. And interview the child, get more details, and also go to court with the child also. It was important for certain children in this community.
Thank you, Mr. Shawn. There are any other questions, push back, or is it being called? Yes, I understand.
I'm not even a huge guy at the public school.
The two options today, one that we have on the screen, obviously has, just as Sean mentioned. So we looked and we said because of it, it's affected work in children in schools. So the after-school care, which council been talking about for some time with Boys and Girls, that's new. Why MCA, a lot of additional after-school care with low modern income, that's in there. Just heard about the Grand Children's Center. So that's why what you have in front of you along with the details of United Industries in the Grand Eaton Assistance. Because we felt those were related to the care that the current fire relief act. That's why we have it for you here, certainly whatever else would like to do. That's why kind of the difference in the request, which basically of that now.
We can go on, right? It's happened. This is the norm for roadblocks. That would have been one common.
We kept them on separate beats so we could get pretty safe.
Any other comments? Any questions? We're standing. Like we're saying, I agree with that, sorry. Would council like to take any action on one of the drafts? Is there motion for the draft first reading?
I'm looking at the, except the draft number two, including the Grand Children's Center. Add a secret.
Very second. Before the move, Mr. Davis seconds. We consider first reading of draft two as presented. Any other comments? Here none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? First reading carries for draft two. Thank you. Mr. Davis, glad to see you. Yes, sir. In that whole, thank you for your work here with this. All right. So that moves us into new business with the procurement resolution number eight thirteen. Mr. Harris?
Glad to help you. We had a fun year down in the White House, place one on five, they go. Which would be a situation three S three D all around, mainly White House, rural areas. We had six bins from the city down low, we had eighteen hundred thirty nine thousand, three hundred nine thousand dollars. You can see, they're very dependent, and three out of town voters, the occupation office, three local voters. We talked about it back days in the lines, which is why I'm certain we will. These are the time we're looking at trying to replace and get everything updated. And if you have something to do so, it's awesome. If you want to do so, or you'd like to recommend a warning contract, you're going to give it to justice. For a hundred thirty nine thousand, three hundred nine.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Mr. Harris? We use the most different, different before.
Yeah, yeah. They're there. Off the red, they do, they do that by one.
Yes, sir.
Now, do you require to move to a new area all the time? We generally go with the lowest bidder if he qualifies good. That's what exactly qualifies good. There could be times that we may have concerns, but thankfully, we don't.
Any further question? There are motion? Motion approved. Before the move, Shawl seconds, that we consider the resolution eight thirteen as presented. Any other questions? Here none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Utility water sewer, consider first reading of north to men water sewer rate in cities, how was that?
Yes, sir, I'll take that and be happy to answer any questions you might have. As council worked through workshop to look at the horizon of our water and sewer rates, focused in on volumetric rates, so basically, you know, the use. And what we have before you is an consideration of base approach. That with only, again, each July one, starting in twenty twenty-one. What we have on the screen is the proposed increase broken out by water and sewer for this next year. If council approve, then this would be volumetric increase. Yeah, I think the workshop showed where residential rates have really, by and large, not been such weird much at all. But we still take it seriously. The utility moves in the right direction. So certainly be happy to answer any questions, but if this were to go through, this is going to be the change in the coming year. Very happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Foreman? Here none? Is there a motion considered for a reading? Mr. Davis moves, Mr. Lowery seconds, that we consider first reading of, of our rates. Any further discussion?
It's also increased commercial rate, is that correct? Not just the residential, but the commercial rate as well?
The change is to the residential rate on volume metric. So if there's, I think that's the piece, because as we talked about in the workshop before, there's commercial, industrial, residential, there's been quite a little impact residential over the last ten or twelve years. So this focus will be on this.
Any further questions? Here none? Got a motion in the second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion first reading carries. Mr. Foreman has continued, and council, thank you for the last, I guess, workshop and the work you've done over the last few weeks, looking into this. We've got a staff like called the staff, Mr. Harris as well, in our utility department. I know that's, it's vital for our community. We want to continue to keep a healthy system and be able to provide more sewer utility processes. Thank you for the work everyone's done. All right, I move this down to the police department, police report. Chief order.
We members of council, that's it. At the time of year, we, double four, council with the agency discussed activities that law enforcement, some of the police department has been involved in about twenty-four months. Some of this all proved pretty quickly. Core values and choose our values and the chief's messages have been in both airports and airports. One of the big issues we had happened maybe twenty-fifth in our nation was unnecessary death of George Lola, who needs law enforcement, which all faces a nation to come together and not only look at how we interact with him, but to collaborate with the community. This photo here shows on June fourteenth, collaborating with the clergy of Sumter, to bring the community in Sumter and police department and sheriff's department together as a community to begin healing as a group. That was well attended, well received by us and our community. The largest division in the police department is a uniformed service division. Awayed by Captain Robertson. By definition, our uniformed service division is officially the arm of the police department that most people interact with in policy service. They have the bad luck of being involved in traffic collision. Children cross the street, or rest, with the rest of our uniformed service division. We broke the calls down, officer initiated, citizen initiated. Where we said, who's things you did it would be actually called. We officer initiated a higher number, which shows the proactive activity of the police department. And I recently read an article where education is affected by COVID. Worshipful Sunday is being affected by COVID. Everything across the spectrum, like you have interaction with people. Leisure, or workplace, has been affected. And it certainly has affected how we operate and how we do things. By and large, most of those increases on the officer initiated is resulting from property checks throughout COVID, particularly from last March. On through the governor's orders, outing for the clothes and the field. More kids out of school, we didn't even have a lot of checking property, checking the property, and checking the school. So that's sort of tells us what those numbers represent. On the screen is our K nine unit. We have a K nine unit made up of labs. We do not have those known as control dogs, which is considered bite dogs. Our lab is trained, you can send drugs. You can see on the bottom of the screen, the number of tracks, physical searches and so forth. I think it's important to point out that last year, we had seventeen missing persons tracked by DNA. Seven of those being children that were missing, or young adults that, I don't know what to call them, using the track data, the data, tracking available. Also Alzheimer's patients, we use them to track in their area where they're normally operating, now they're up to six. And we got four missing persons, which turned out to be elderly, that we used data. So other than doing official law enforcement services, the vehicle searches, our searches, the constituencies, or search warrant, or bleeding suspect. Obviously, that is an issue for us, you can find those persons who may not be able to serve. Traffic collision, we had one thousand eight hundred eighty. Our traffic division investigated one thousand one hundred. Next, our investigative service division, which is made up of our official investigators for property crimes, and also organized crime department, which is located in special investigation, which does primary physical forensics for homes and people. If we look at the next page, it's got a break, it's broken down by property crimes, financial crimes, juvenile crimes, and alcohol. That is much like a part of a crime, we do the UCR, which you'll see later, in fact, we put crime reporting. If you notice on the bottom, it has clearance rates by the police department, which is way above the national average that we have the outright. We remain consistently, after the last several years, above the national average relative to clearance and solving. So our next page is our support services, which is normal polygraphs, police department polygraphs, AFS. AFS is automatic fingerprint identification system. That's, if we were able to cure a grand surgery as you go, and that's digitally searching, fingerprinting of crime scene or suspect within AFS, where there's hundreds of thousands, not millions of individuals. We had two hundred forty-six cases, actually six hundred forty-one searchers, and a hundred eighty-five in protection. Pretty miraculous, we do a lot of work for Plraydon County, Sumter County, Lee County, there's Bill P. First of all, County, County Police Department, they do not have the AFS machine. We provide that service for them, should they need assistance in solving crimes. This turned out to be a great asset for the police department. Our next page is our drug seizures. You can read the numbers there, how we stood last year. One thing that I do want to point out, in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, we were involved with undercover operation with the fellow government, called Operation Stash and Wage. This was a group that was working out of Wishville, which was Allen County. They were multi kilo dealers, setting off, carrying a gun. We made the initial arrest in November of two thousand nineteen. Made ten additional arrests this year, and actually continue with the property and the investigation of the persons that are incarcerated currently. We're going to see more arrests coming. Basically, the right, so they're just active and active services. Other than being involved in, by definition, active, they also serve as a conduit between us and the community. Particularly with people that mostly are associated with the night scenes. As a voice on many things, they may be, it's not associated necessarily with the crime. We have a lot of outreach in respect to the community. The victims, all issues related to things outside of official crime. But we're very dedicated to what we do, we're very committed to what we do. They assist the community in seeking the assistance of agencies outside of our, what I meant by lifeboat. That is the base in your book, is that significant arrests, whatever you, with investigative services. Our support services division is quasi administrative inside for the house. We have approval, our CAU and training, our CED, our citizens assistance unit. Look, the officer working in that area, which is our main lobby, we're normal business hours. We put in a number of calls, lobby down at that, and there's people taking, playing along with it. I think that they have, on average, about eight thousand people here to walk into the lobby, citizens for assistance. Our representation is the light, which is our scungements, the question reports, UCR reports, which is required by us, by law, from the private, from the FBI. And also the last thing, the leg of city arrested, it's in reports. We require the law enforcement agency to report all of our contacts on any days of the community that have done that for many years. Our next, there are now four master. We issue all of our uniforms, everything takes a bit of weeks often. That's just sort of snapshot, if you will, of what happens right on the inside. So the next is, obviously answers to us, is the number of police officers who are in the process. Last year, we had requested, probably the most of this came from Facebook, or our website, through social media, through advertising, everything. We received nine thousand fifty-eight requests for applications, as police officers come up. Of that, we sent six hundred ninety-four applications out. The majority of, the majority of persons that requested an application, otherwise did not qualify, did not return the application, did not answer the question. We have, on our webpage, notice in our career section, we have four questions that are qualified for example. Were you twenty-one years of age, were you an American citizen, had you fallen in the student home? So any of those questions answered, yes, cannot be certified, picks on top of that, and that automatically is qualified. Interestingly enough, we hired fifteen people, then resigned, six retired, were negative one. How we did fifteen, our past year was pretty consistent. We boarded, or actually did have boards of nineteen people, who were disqualified, and ten did not accept the offer. And we find that about eight point nine percent of those persons have already been in the process of doing all the paperwork and just failed to respond. That's something that law enforcement across the nation is struggling with. If you sort of think about the state of South Carolina, the population is about five million people. And from that, there's another twenty-one police departments in South Carolina, forty-six years apart, and one young police. With DNR, TCC, Auto Pro, PGS, SLED, all of those agencies are living in the same area that we're in, in our states. It's very competitive with police officers. And then to go back, COVID, caused the housing, the criminal justice academy, they're going to warn South Carolina, slow down the process of us actually giving people follow and train process. I'm not sure they're going to stop opening that, if we were to pull that. We're also responsible for the telecommunications division of the county. We manage the nine-one-one service for police department, five departments, sheriff's department, and president. Fully staffed, we have thirty operators. That's another place that we're very competitive, we find them, we do, we wish to be a nine-one-one operator. We have several openings at the staff. They were also using our marketing company, Assist Us, and pushing that information out globally. Qualified persons to take those positions. So one of the things you can see really is drawn, particularly over the last three years, since doing more Google advertising, Facebook advertising in areas, moved on from zero, website is quality bars in two thousand eighteen, to nine thousand fifty-eight, to two thousand. That certainly has grown in the net, we cast well, it's a good opportunity to be interested in law enforcement. You cannot continue to recruit the same way that we did twenty years ago. Do not buy the jobs of C D F or the job fair days or days of old. That most people that are twenty-one years of age or a little older, particularly in the early, have grown into such a beautiful. They're accustomed to surfing on the phone and lots of computer, they will attend to that. One of the results of looking locally for future employers, if you notice the bottom of fifty-five retired last year, they deliver some provision for the state, perceive a few plus by the state, should have more of the state person. Next, there's trying to even, I will talk a little bit more about that as we move forward with precisely what we do. We have requirements for criminal justice academy training. Our office is the main thing to serve the patient. Two of the focus areas last year were to be a lot of data, to measure violence together. Why not do that? And we continue to provide training to our officers for four-four hours in part, which is a great amount. The officer's expertise is another thing we do. So community services division is hard to make a change. It's hard to make changes, Bob. She has there the community services, it's one of the new programs, this is the island with the market about policy checkmate. That program is another idea across the state of the southeast. Our involvement embedded itself in the community with our city population. At last check, sixty-five years of age and over represent about sixty percent of our population in the city. And we talked about many times that calls of the president of military issues, not people they know. Define a lot of people, and it's huge to say here, maybe within some sort of other job field of the patient. Retired here, the kids move on, one of the spouses passed, and then the other spouses up without human contact. Grow old and struggle to be smaller. So Warren Davis, or otherwise known as Parker G., has about forty-five foot off lines. We've had to adjust how we developed to live in the country, elderly, as far as law enforcement. Still made contact this number, the personal space we did at one point. But his friendship with those, maybe the only few interactions they had. Except when we walked through, when we assisted the household, so we were taking the dirt, so we were taking the drugs. So he's really served as a arm of the city and police department. I don't know of another program that provides that type of service, particularly for a reserve community. I'm sure that it just continues to grow as we move forward. Also, under the Department of Major Sinclair's overview, there's the downtown area. I press in downtown area, we have a very diverse customer base. A very diverse population down in the night department. It's really a great opportunity for us in that. With the community retirement, particularly the large number of military folks coming downtown, the interaction between officers. The next, our social media, so over the last three years, it's grown fifty percent. We try to provide real-time information about events that affect the lives of our citizens, whether power outage, traffic line out, weather related, COVID related, health and safety related. We've got quite a following on Facebook. We do know that we have thirty thousand, we are cocky enough, we're probably not reaching the numbers generation. On Facebook, we receive nationally is averaging about thirty-five years of age and over. So the generation to migrate to another platform to a different time. So we continue working on. So that's, that's in that bottom left corner of the photograph, you see the officer placing a book bag in the back of the vehicle. We weren't able to narrow it back through Bashing Crossland this year, having formally had a call for. We still are able to obtain all the donations for student supplies. And by working with Dr. Kenel Mark, Mark Knox, she identified the areas with greatest need, the principal feedback, we're able to provide them with student supply. Next, there's telecommunication space, we talked about that a little earlier. Look, ask the calls for service to the primary agency to serve. The private insurance program, us, our call of ninety thousand, one twenty-five next year. A majority of those calls were proactive, checking property, checking school, checking the elder, seeing. Our three-year total follows for increasing one hundred and nine thousand seven four days. Again, that's why I made it clear to them, this time, that really related all the different numbers. So we were talking long ago about social media and trying to attract people along with movement, maybe if this was something. So we were, we're doing some research on what people want to be when they grow up. So we came across a state, the eighty-six percent of our company actually go, this can be a social media influencer. That's what they want to do. So that's, that's what we're thinking about, social media influence. We've got to continue to be predictive of how we go about attracting people along. So a matrix for a crime, for your overall crime. If you look at our second level first, we talked about that. Look for the numbers that you would have in fully staffed. Right now, we have a hundred percent of the small officers. We're averaging, I think, with a freshman, a hundred percent, a hundred fifty people. We're fully passing the goal of one hundred blocks. There's still a tendency to, our recruiting, overall, the total of patients out of the long range. I'll come off the service, put my arm, that's presidential business mark. I pray that we're only to know this for the self action, the form of that, with the skill which we're assigned. So one of the things that, you know, it's last year nationally, alcohol sales increased exponentially. Particularly for March, again, in the summer, what ended here, more people working from home, more people are at home. More people, all themselves, alcohol, which raised the national balance since across the nation. So you see the next, so if you look at your domestic violence, your civil disturbances. All a great deal related to alcohol use. The next call, suspicious person in position. As you can look at our office service, yeah, we, a lot of that is driven by practical problems. Something on us, we have the marches, state maintain roadways, second parks in the nation. So when you think about something, think about our density, just in the nation off, those that are built a hundred years ago. It's poor, it's pursuit, and then cut out, you have the risk of getting caught. You do not track the volume of the situation, always in case you need to. They also have a lot of positions, or newer positions in private. That's, that's probably the problem. So if you look at our total in this crimes, the graphs pretty much self-explanatory. If you look at the numbers, I'm not going to say the first, it's very long here. I'm talking about that. My friend happened to look at the first model, we up twenty-five percent in the group this year. There's reasons for that, relative to the number of victims. So that's, that's what we're trying to do. So it's, it's something, as long as you go down, the increase and the decrease is worth. You may see the weapons crime, you ask yourself, do we have that many weapons crimes? But weapons crimes could be connected to all the regular, knowing that their weapons stolen, that counts for the weapons crime. If they weapons used the crime, that counts for the weapons crime. If burglary happens, it involves a lot of that counts for the weapons crime. So it's not totally one hundred percent, if you make that accurate, that crime starts involving weapons. It's any unrelated crime, where the weapon deceived or stolen and recovered, now it's a weapon crime. But overall, we're seven percent of all the last year's numbers. With the exception of two years ago, I believe, a lot of people continue to go down crime index. Property crimes, with a certain degree of certainty, with different areas, especially on practice. Crime against persons, which is a massive balance. On solid individuals, very difficult to predict. Very difficult to interpret, unless you have to be in that area. Much of that is based on question, fact. So we will continue to work on that. There are highlights, one of the things we were able to do last year was celebrate our ad, which means the period of dispatch. Which was, or if we will, all of our calls for service, we will now one-on-one center for all of our partners in public sector. This company, my host company, has changed the name quite frequently. The voluntary server, now central square. But one of the, it's a big development system that's beneficial for us. Is it move our records management system, our call for service, our evidence, our case management software, all in the one package. So the telecommunications operator receives call now one-on-one center, which we use, we can just believe. The candidate of which, it takes like a call, like a response. We have computers in our vehicle that has what's called mobile CAD, which reflects what the clothing business operator received, which reduces keystroke and change rate, profession, and safe. We're able to pull up history from the field and location by name or address. It's very beneficial to our officers, and we want to call and assess what may be, particularly master violence situation, or what any occupation. Receive an employment location, you can, you can help, any of a suspect, you can do a sound line. You can find any information, you can validate names, that on top. So people photographed on the call history, M C I C, which is which. The next page is our web design, the part of the proper strategy, just last week, which I do have. Very clean, it's very simple. Four function of everything you do, own the webpage, you search for the information you need. But it puts you back to your page. Everything you do now, we're trying to prove people, uh, through the page. The questions I brought earlier, without following up questions, police officers are located there, and that's what all of it means. It's, uh, probably to some repeating that time, or whatever. The picture of one right, is National Lampoon's Christmas declaration contest that we did, the division for the police department. A lot of people come today to see you in Oxford, have children, problems, social, social business, and of course, Indian woman, I am judged. All the divisions out. Considering the amount of issues that we dealt with last year, the stress reliever for officers, him together. During Christmas, and children, who are making season, obviously, work. Did you ever give us the mayor? I don't know about the mayor, I took you there. That was wrong, we'll go, we'll go smile. Uh, that's two children putting the letters to sound in the box, we do that every year. Put our sound box for the police department, send an answer, put the letters, and send it back. Good, uh, good connection to the color, to this part. Young man, he still, the light of spring, and on page fifty-six, Charles Conkers, and I came before you, all the Black County meetings, the officer of the year. That was an opportunity to talk about some training that we did, based on the occurrence of the tragedy that killed Floyd. It changes the market approximately. Even before most recent events, I said recent, thirty-five years. We part in a company called Golden, so, Golden is a computer law firm, professional development training group. We get two officers go to attend the training, training, and D S play. This is one of the examples, uh, where D S relation could be in the work. We prevented a one man, uh, providing the training, watching time, to D S delay the portion of psychosis. We didn't really, we didn't, potentially suicide with the head. Also, calls, uh, everything we look at nationally, as a community of law enforcement, and all this, they look at our own policies. Our procedures, our training, we were the first law enforcement agency in state, to provide for criminal justice academy, a training for them, for beauty to them, and things. Essentially, what that means is we saw what happened in the George Lloyd situation, we saw numerous officers there. We looked at our policy, the days and use of force policy, the units of entertainment, if you were another officer, and they were exceeding the level of force in that city effectively. Went to our training facilities, and actually, for all of our officers to go through it. We set up scenarios, and have role players, and situations that we can deal with, commonly, the days of community. They have role players and actors, over, closely interacting with the suspect, or the officer had a unit of entertainment, had an entertainment. Anything that you do on, no matter what you do, play how you practice, how you train, is how you perform the work. So the days and then, if that's your question, right, you understand, you've got a required identity, identity, citizen of the officer. If the officer is using force, you know. Key element what we did, is we put, we were junior officers, edition scene classes. So that we get conditioned that if they supervise you, you still have to do it. Training was quite a whole deal, and undertaken to do it. We proved to be, to improve. Again, our methodology of dealing with the public, I said this many times, if you believe in following law issues, you play the law system, you don't have to follow the law. And providing equitable, fair, and justice service, with units of being active, is our theme, our methodology. By doing, presenting, doing, doing, training, is another tool that you build, by training, you can do with other criminal officers. So Mayor Jackson, it was Assistant Chief Jackson, he's here with his second. Was promoted to Assistant Chief. I'll tell you every four seconds, I'll see probably. Jeffries been in law enforcement for a couple of years, he's not old, about seventy years together, perhaps together. He is proud of himself, he is well known throughout the community, he's well respected, both internally and externally. We do not make decisions in the back of anything that is not critical, we decide immediately, we discuss it. We're not talking about the impact on individual officer, but communication officer, or operation, or what we see. So collectively, we talk about many things. In our first partner, our current, I bet you, recognize that we'll talk about a lot of things, but we never do. What we want to be fair for the patient. So he's a great partner in that, well respected within the community. And Lieutenant Floyd, as we noted, too, questioning, and also our deep on video, our body cameras, are very, very busy. Almost anything administrative, in law, finance, security, or body camera. Any spare information, any free information, I'll close with. So if you look over that, and you see his hands, it's a hundred and twenty-two. So that represents the number of persons that died, a little bit deaths, in two thousand two. To recognize those questions, deaths, and the families, sacrifices, misfortunes that occurred actually. So I'm, I'll be prepared to answer any questions you may have on a particular area that I may not travel the country. No question. Sir, Chief, any question, Chief? That's all right, sir. So again, we did the art. Marion Hikes does much of our artistic type work, and she did a great job with that, along with our.
We put graphics, very practical, very, very easy to follow. I would like to use the whole council, but I hope reminder, the personnel daily. Everything else is for you. We provided a orderly, safe environment. We have a proper, without a complicated part.
And our, and our whole source, as I am very cognizant of, see, we're city, mayor, the council, the city manager, the leadership in the city. There's nothing that we have to come forward and say, we have to, to need, I don't know. Sure, more to move forward, but nothing better actually. You know, and you, except the leadership.
Thank you, Chief, one, I got one name that's close, and that's the snake or these council members, the chief and assistant chief Jackson, thank you for the shift, I appreciate it. You, you mentioned it, that you kind of, kind of, the way you normally do, obviously, you have a, draw a whole lot of attention to yourself and departments, but this council, you know, what each number is, it's clearance rates, I like numbers. So you mentioned that the clearance rates are above the national average, so we always hear about crime. A lot of times, we never hear about, you know, how we able to clear it all, just, and just bragging on our department, and just, you know, our, our citizens. For instance, a lot of crime, that beyond clearance rate, feet out, soon, is that where the, they want? It's forty-five percent. And so our department is cleared seventy percent. That's pretty impressive, and it just, you, your property problem, we're cleared thirty percent, and the national average seventy percent. So that just, again, that is, you guys working hard, behind the scenes, this is stuff that we all put on here now, so I really, that, that was impressive. And then also, the council, to look, as we continue doing the work, is, is, I guess, probably one of the struggles, not struggles, but maybe one of the areas that, that department, how can we help them, and how can we go alongside them, with officer retention, officer recruitment, that we were talking about. How, um, officer's difficult, to be a police officer nationally, what can we do with something, moving forward, to continue to support the department. So just let you know, I know, as I said, if we do support you, we appreciate you. Conversation, so, hey, your pleasure. Thank you, sir, appreciate it. All right. Thank you, sir, that leads us now back to our new business, back to our regular agenda to the council reports. Does anyone with counsel, that can give you a good view?
Yes, sir, it's strong. I was fortunate to attend a meeting at the prison, to hospital, with a hundred day report from the new CEO, Louis Smith. And I have to say, you know, I love Michelle, but I hate to see what happened there. And I probably didn't give the new CEO much of chance in the beginning. But I was totally impressed with the presentation. Some important prior community to have this strong hospital, and there's great report, there's some of the highlights from that meeting. Louis Smith brought to us, we have two new specialized physicians moving to Sumter, and they're going to live in Sumter. It's been a while since we've had new doctors move, live in our community. The E R, emergency room issue should be resolved by the end of April. He's submitting a plan the first week of April for approval there, and I feel certain that that will be approved. The, uh, the overall financial position of hospital is significantly improved. And it's profitable, and that's all, that's very encouraging for us, that he submitted, there was topic. And, uh, it's profitable, and that's all, that's very encouraging for us, that he submitted, and gave us topic of the capital plans for the next five years, as well as just some. New emphasis of trying to, um, the public relations in our community really tell the story about prison two hospital. I can tell you, it's one that goes on the board of two, and one that's been involved with that now for six, seven years. It was the most encouraging meeting in, um, the last seven years. So I'm excited, I feel that our hospital is headed in the right direction.
That's good, thank you, sir, that is a good. Everybody always talking about the city, the town, the school, the hospital, the base, we all, we all have to fire a hundred percent. Anything else?
Thank you, sir. We extended our, we've had, we've got a letter, we're extending the game. You live, I agree. I like, like the attention to the folks, and, uh, appreciate that, I should have, took the risk, and went ahead and hired someone. I feel there's a delay, if you can identify where it is. But be more, be more proactive and maybe more coordinated, um, if it does affect, if it affects that. Quality of life. Thank you, thank you. With the man, with the man, I had a, I had a, uh, on track, and maybe putting a meaningful first on campus.
Sir, I see. Like you, I was thinking, you should back on, uh, all of that, about this, that you know, the last meeting.